Call the meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present, and the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Commission President Johnson, there is. The 5:00 PM timetable agenda would like to be postponed from this evening due to staff illness and weather-related travel issues. They cannot make this evening's meeting. We hope to have them rescheduled for December 16th.
Are there any other changes? Nope. Okay. Would there be a motion to approve the order of business with that change?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not? Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non-timetable agenda. First item there is the human resource ordinance revision. And Mr. Coling, is there anything you'd like to say about this item?
Mr. President Commissioners, this matter is for second reading and final passage, was heard for first reading at the last commission meeting. We are anticipating making some changes to some of aspects of the city's human resources code with respect to vacation accruals and the use of those accruals, as well as some other matters that may make our hiring process and retention process a little better. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading, and city staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on 1533? There's no one from the public. Any comments or questions by city commissioners or other city staff?
I'll move. We approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1533.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is the multi-county, multi-hazard mitigation plan, and Mr. Kessel is introducing that item.
Thank you, President Johnson. This resolution would formally adopt the multi-county, multi-hazard mitigation plan. That plan was developed by Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council and presented to you at the last city commission meeting. City staff at that time had not had adequate opportunity to review that plan. We have since done so, and are recommending approval of that plan. I did speak specifically with Police Chief Dossinger and Fire Chief Seavock, and both indicated their desire to have this plan adopted. Just one more additional comment. This plan, if adopted and approved by FEMA, does make the city of Dickinson eligible to receive mitigation grants in the future. Mitigation grants can be used to decrease the damage, or the potential damage, that could be incurred by storms and/or other weather-related events. Mr. Burris is in the audience again this evening, and if there are any questions, especially those of a difficult nature, he's more than willing to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions by the city commission? Mr. Coling, does this have a resolution number?
Mr. President, this would be Resolution 53-2013.
Well, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 53-2013.
Do we have a second? And we have the second by Commissioner Steiner. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item C is the West Lift Station real estate purchase, and I believe, Mr. Coling, you're going to introduce this item.
Yes, Mr. President. Commissioners, in your packet is a real estate purchase agreement for the city's purchase of an approximately two-acre parcel of property. We would be purchasing this parcel from Stark County, Stark County Park Board in particular. The purchase price is $50,000, and this is the parcel on which the city intends to construct the West Lift Station, which will be the major receiving station for wastewater from most of the west side of town. It's a major project, and this is the parcel of property on which that project is intended to be constructed. City staff would recommend approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
Just one question. Do we need the full two acres?
We do. Commissioner Steiner, perhaps Mr. Zurov would like to weigh in on that. It is a major project, and something that, in the design criteria for it, was a two-acre parcel, was what was required in order to construct that facility. I don't know if Mr. Zurov would like to comment.
Mr. Steiner, the property, a lot of the property, the two acres, isn't, some of it isn't usable, but it's their access into that lift station area. We need it big enough for a couple reasons. It is a major lift station. We'll have trucks with chemicals coming in and out of there. We also wanted a little bigger parcel for possible expansion of that lift station. So, that was a question that Stark County also asked, is, do we need that big a parcel? And I feel we do, with the entrance and the way it's located, and the potential for adding on, and the trucks and traffic going through there, that I think it's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions?
That's a fair market price, 25,000 acres, so I recommend to make a motion to purchase it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the real estate purchasing agreement. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It takes us to item D. Mr. Kessel's reports.
Thank you, President Johnson. The first item is a request for a liquor license ordinance change. This request was received by Apodan. Apodan is the developer who has brought, or is bringing, Cashwise Foods to the city of Dickinson. They have changed the location of their, the land that they intend to construct, the Cashwise Foods, and thereby postponing the date that they can open the store. The ordinance was revised by the city commission once previously. This was to accommodate a similar request from Walmart. We have utilized all of the extensions available to us as city staff for the Cashwise project, and can no longer issue extensions. It does require an ordinance change in order to allow them to utilize the liquor license that they purchase. An alternative to Cashwise, to extending the, or adopting another change to the liquor license ordinance would be for Cashwise to lease or construct a smaller building, or at least an existing building, and set up operations just on the liquor side, and then consolidate those operations when they're able to open their new facility. That option has been reviewed with Jay Moore from Apodan. It is, for obvious reasons, not their first choice, and they'd like to see us revise our ordinance to allow them additional time. They approximate, they would need about six months in order to, from the extensions that they've been provided, they, it goes to about August of 2014, and they would be, they would need until December of 2014 in order to comply, or in order to get the building open. So, if there's anything specific to the ordinance, I think Mr. Coling can speak to that, but that gives you a little bit of background on this specific request. If you are in favor of it, then we'll bring forth an ordinance that would reflect their request.
Mr. Coling, do you have any comments that you'd like to make about the proposed change, or requested change, I guess?
Mr. President Commissioners, I think Mr. Kessel summarized staff's comments. I guess we are looking for direction from the commission as to whether this is something you would like to entertain. If you do, we can draft an ordinance that would allow for additional extensions beyond what has already been granted to Apodan. As Mr. Kessel stated, our initial ordinance required the purchaser of a non-off sale license to be open and operate under that license within 12 months from the date of the granting of it. Since there were a couple of license holders that weren't able to meet that 12-month requirement, we did change the ordinance once to allow Mr. Kessel, the city administrator, to grant up to a 12-month extension, so that someone would actually have 24 months in which to open and operate. And then, now, an additional extension of up to six months is being requested here. So, I think staff do have some concerns, since we do have a limited number of on-off sale licenses, to have one of those licenses essentially off the market, or not operating as it's intended to do for now a fairly extended period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Comments by commissioners?
Well, since they were the only bidder, and they paid a premium price, I don't know why we wouldn't extend it. I don't think the building was all their fault. And if we just, I feel we should extend or change the ordinance, because most of our projects are taking two years.
Mr. President, I don't, I don't think I'd have a problem with six months, but defining what development is, is what concerns me. There are two different areas out there now where I understand Cashwise is going to go, that there's dirt being moved. So, have they begun development? And if so, can those two spots that have had a little dirt moved sit there empty for a long, long time? That's what would concern me. I, you know, this tweaking six months, I don't think's a big deal, but I think we have to define development, maybe.
Mr. Moore is in the audience, and maybe he can better address.
Well, just let the commissioners talk through this, and then we'll give Mr. Moore an opportunity to, to talk. I think the recommended language here is, or the language that's in our packets here was submitted by, not submitted by the city attorney, is that correct?
Yeah.
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 Okay. And if, I assume that if we were favorable to doing something here in this particular case, and you made some amendments to the, you would make your own amendments to the, to the ordinance, rather than just take the language that was submitted? Is that, I think Mr. Jackson has a valid point.
Yeah. And do you think you would amend the language just discretionary towards the commission? I think you have to look at this on a case-by-case basis. You know, sure, we're missing out on some tax revenue by not having the license in place, but when you only have a set amount of licenses, you've got to buy one when one becomes available. And like Commissioner DuKart said, you know, I think the city shoulders some responsibility for some of the delays, not on this construction project in general, but just, we had a rough year, as far as getting some construction projects through all of the phases of where they need to be. And in this environment, probably unlike any other time in Dickinson, it takes a lot more time to bring a business online, and so you have to be kind of adaptable to that. I would guess on the plus side, you know, our police department indicates that liquor stores are actually harder to police and control, because the alcohol is going to other places in the community. So, it may have saved us some money on that side of life, too. But I have no problem with playing it by a case-by-case basis. You guys have some common sense of just what's going on in the construction field out there.
Mr. Kessel, Mr. Coling, if we were to amend the ordinance to where there would be more time allowed here, would you be thinking in terms of granting the city administrators, say, the discretion to go up to 18 months to 12 months? Or would you keep the 12 months for the city administrator and make it a decision of the city commission, say, for an additional six months? How would, how do you think you would recommend that be handled? And there might be another option that I didn't present, too.
Mr. President, Mr. Kessel and I have not had a chance to really talk that through. You know, in light of our current ordinance, the first 12-month extension is at the discretion of the city administrator. Thinking it through for the, for the first time, I think it makes sense for additional extensions to come before the city commission. Right now, the language we have in code requires for any extension that the applicant or the license holder present good cause, or show good cause why an extension should be granted. You know, if we can do one 12-month extension on that basis, and then any additional extension for good cause shown to, to the city commission, I think that may make, make a certain amount of sense.
If I recall the discussion a year or two ago when we changed this ordinance, you know, our concerns were that someone would just buy it and sit on it, and kind of take it out of circulation, or they could buy it, sit on it, and then flip it for profit, and that isn't what it's really intended for. And I know that's not the, don't believe that's the situation here, but I mean, you, you want to, if you're going to amend the ordinance, we'd certainly want to, wouldn't want that situation to be readily attained, like I think where Mr. Jackson was going. You go out, move a few yards of dirt, and say, now we're under development, and, yeah, I don't think we're interested in that.
I have a further question. As we're going through these extension periods, and their actual renewal period would have come up, they are paying for their annual fees to keep the license current as well.
Yes, they are. Commissioner Altman's, they do pay the annual fee. It's 3,500 bucks or something like that.
Right. They pay that regardless.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Other comments by commissioners?
I would be in favor of leaving it as is, up to 12 months, and if they want an extension, they come to the city and ask for the additional six.
Yeah, I think the commission should have a say when it gets to that point.
Mr. Moore, did you want to address the commission?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. President, and fellow commissioners. I appreciate the discussion on this topic that's gone on tonight. I just, I think to tighten this down, we would be willing to, and we attempted this language, and Attorney Coling, you can certainly add to what you want to put here, but moving dirt, we don't believe has begun development. What our intention is, is to start this project on April 1st and be done by October 1st. And so, right now, the extension goes until August 19th of next summer. I truly believe that our building will look in a similar fashion to what Menards is right now. I mean, it'll be, the building will be up, there'll be a roof on it, will be all kinds of equipment out there, and so, the additional six months beyond that is going to hopefully ensure that there's going to be a business that opens. It's not our intent to just tie up an open-ended license, so we would be willing to insert language of that nature, that, you know, building must be up and working towards a certificate of occupancy. Other than that, I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I just appreciate that they're being proactive about this. We are months away from the August deadline, and they are in here in front of the game asking for the extension, knowing full well how the construction season's going to play out. I appreciate that much more than coming in, you know, at the night that, yeah, and saying, we need the extension. It gives everybody that time to, to think it through and see what their intentions are.
Well, I think as a community, we're anxious for Cashwise to get built and to open, and so. Was there another comment?
I was just going to ask, this probably goes to Mr. Corton. How is that development coming? I mean, are they going to have all the necessities, and the water, and the sewer, and all that?
Prior to the meeting, I had a chance to meet with Ron Rad, the developer, and also, and also the applicant, and they are on schedule. We've advertised them for the planning commission for final plot approval. There is some issues that we need to resolve with that, but I would anticipate them being on the agenda for, for December, and then coming to the city commission for final plot approval in January. We talked about the timeframes in August, I mean, in April, they want to start pushing dirt, and, and is that a conceivable time period for their building permit if they submit it in December and January? And it's absolutely conceivable, so. Their timelines would, you know, I think are very satisfactory, and ones that can be achieved. So, I feel very comfortable with respect to that, working with Ron Rad, and also with the Apodan group, so.
Unless we have an April 15th storm, like last year, or this year, we're still in the same era. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, I think what we're hearing here, Mr. Kessel, Mr. Coling, you can come back with a proposed ordinance modification or action, and, and if you wanted to come back as early as the next meeting, that would be fine. If you want to hold off until January, I think that's fine, too. So, give you some time to think about your wordsmithing there. Mr. Kessel?
We'll bring something to the table for you, then. Okay.
Does that meet your needs, Mr. Moore?
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you for your consideration.
The next item on the agenda is the North Dakota State Water Commission policy. You did receive a copy of that document. This is a revision to an existing policy. I have to admit, I've had, not had the opportunity to read it word for word, but it is the document that they hope to have an effect by the 2015 timeframe. There were several questions in the meeting that I attended, but they pertain mostly to initial eligibility and rollout, and, and less about the document revisions themselves. I took that to be a positive sign, and there was general acceptance by the majority of the people in the room. There was about two dozen attendees of that meeting, and they are scheduled for several other major cities. So, there could be questions that come up as they roll this policy out and receive public input. But to date, we'll just keep you updated, and if you have any specific questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to bring those back to the staff of the State Water Commission and provide feedback to them directly.
Can, can you tell us, kind of in general, what these policy changes mean to the city of Dickinson?
What they're trying to do is update, the ones that are most pertinent to us as a local political subdivision are the percentages of reimbursement. So, if there's an incurred loss due to an event of some kind, or a mitigation project, they lay out the percentage of partnership that the State Water Commission will provide for that specific project. And they vary from, I think, a high of 65% to a low of around 30%. And depending upon which project it is, or what type of project it is, they vacillate. The one thing that they have included in this policy that they have not in the past is engineering costs. So, you would be able to submit a portion of your engineering, or submit your engineering costs, and a portion of them would be covered. So, in general, I think it's a, what I've been able to see anyways, it's a positive change, and one that I think is generally going to meet with acceptance around the state.
So, are you, are you talking about like a weather-related event, or what about, is oil impact considered an event?
No. I don't believe they would consider oil impact an event. What we're mostly talking about is if a, well, for instance, if, if we were doing a, or Southwest Water, actually, is doing a project, if that wasn't a state agency, we could request funds for a upgrades to a water treatment plant. Or if we were doing a diversion channel because of consistent flooding over the course of time, they would pay for a portion of that diversion channel.
Does that apply to stormwater? So, like, you know, we talk about our issues up north along Highway 22, where we, we may have to do some major work to deal with stormwater there. Would this policy apply to something like that?
It certainly could. If the, if the stormwater has, has resulted in overland flooding, and thereby damaging property, it very well could. I'll, I'll review that specifically to make sure, but, yeah, it very well could apply in that scenario.
I have a question. One of the, like, the cost share categories was underlined, engineering services for all categories be eligible for cost share up to 35%.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's going to affect us?
Well, definitely. And if we would have a project that would be accepted, and the state became a partner, we could now submit those for reimbursement, where in the past you could not. So, if there's any other feedback on that, even after the meeting tonight, please let me know. I'll be happy to try to answer those questions, or carry them to the State Water Commission. The next item is the capital improvement update, and I've distributed to you a draft or a working document that we've been using in-house to track not only the projects, but the cost of those projects, and the funding of those projects. So, I'll, I'll try to just spend a couple minutes explaining the worksheet itself and what it means. It's a working document, and I really want to emphasize that. This document can change with regularity. Most of the items you see on here are estimates, unless they're in italics, then that means that that's a bid amount, that's something we've actually gone out to the marketplace and bid. So, some of these estimates were provided in our comprehensive plan. Others have been updated since then. So, it really is an estimate of cost, but they are prioritized, and we, as a staff, are going through that prioritization process as we speak. Again, there's been additional projects that are on the list, so to speak, that need to be included in this spreadsheet before you. We are tracking some projects that we will not have city resources in, other than time, whether that's in tracking the project, providing input onto the project. You'll notice that a lot of the ones towards the bottom end of the, of the spreadsheet are all in a black background with white print. Those are mostly state projects, projects that we certainly have a lot of input in, but we are not the bid letter, we are not the owner of that project, nor do we expect to have a whole lot of financial resources into that project itself. So, after the prioritization, and a brief description of the project itself, we move into the projected cost. We are defining that as three components. The first is design. Generally, that's, that's an engineering function. Construction, quite obvious of what that is, and then construction management, and that's the, the process of making sure what was designed actually got built. And then the total cost as a sum total of those three components. We then try to subtract from that total any private funding that we may have received from developers or other sources, and public funding. And what I mean by that is if we receive urban roads funding from state agencies or other, other dollars, it would be represented in that column, thereby lowering the total by that figure. And then we have specifically pulled out the Energy Impact Grant. We have received several Energy Impact Grants over the course of a couple years, so we're tracking them as they are specific to the project. So, once you take the total project costs, subtracting those two revenue streams, you come up with what we're terming the city contribution. That is the amount that we must come up with from a financial standpoint in order to make that project a reality. We then try to define how we're going to finance that project, whether it'll be through a bond, some sort of construction financing, or the use of a revolving loan fund. You can see that there's a preliminary estimate on how we would pay for each of those projects, and what source of financing that we would use. And then, the last few columns are how we would pay back. And then the last few columns are how we would pay back either those loans or those bonds. Those sources of revenue include state revenue. That's made up of two different sources, as approved by the legislature in the last session. Formula funds. We received $375,000 per percentage of employment. And currently, we're sitting at 21% of oil field employment, which works out to just under $8 million a year for that particular revenue source. We also receive, and this gets a little convoluted, 30% of the, of 9% of the gross production tax. And the gross production tax is currently set at 5%. This is also estimated to be a revenue source of just under $7 million annually. And that floats based on production and price. The amount that I mentioned of just under $7 million was an estimate provided by the state finance OMB. And we are running much higher in terms of production than what they budgeted and slightly higher in price than what they've budgeted. So we anticipate that that formula funding will be higher than the original estimates that were in this worksheet. I have heard figures have been provided with an estimate that could equate $50 million over the course of a biennium. That's much higher. This spreadsheet was worked off a number of 22.5. So it's a much higher amount than what the formula represents on the spreadsheet. President Johnson has reported earlier about a visit that we had with Governor Dalrymple, Lieutenant Governor Wrigley, and Chief of Staff Rocheberger, where we essentially reviewed a document similar to this, so they're aware that we do have a shortfall. We're essentially going to be tapped out with about $100 million in bonded indebtedness, whether it's an R or L or an outright bond. And we'll have committed revenue streams to pay those bonds or those loans back, which will prevent us from issuing future bonds or taking on further debt. I've met with Commerce Director Al Anderson, some of his staff, DOT officials, and other representatives from the governor's office to go over this worksheet and estimated that an additional $30 million in grant funds would be required for us to stay within our revenue limits in terms of how much we can bond for in the future. I'm optimistic that that is a number that can be provided to the City of Dickinson in the form of grants and done so in 2014 without a legislative special session, but maybe through a governor's award. They are working through that process as a Department of Commerce staff, and will make a recommendation to the governor in the upcoming days and weeks. So we'll have to see how that goes. One of the reasons that the $30 million figure came out is in order for us to do our 2015 and 2016 projects, we have to start those in 2014. We have to begin that engineering in order to make sure that we can stay on track for construction in 15 and 16. And we will not have the dollars, or I don't anticipate we'll have the dollars, to do that unless a source of revenue like state grants provides that for us. Our sources of revenue to pay off this indebtedness include the 1% sales tax, using either the 50 or the 30% portions, and the half-cent sales tax. Now, those funds currently are dedicated to road maintenance, so we have to be very careful about what we commit in the future to make sure that we can continue to maintain what's already been provided. And I'm sure Mr. Zurov likes to hear that statement, because he's very concerned about the amount of road miles that we have and that we're adding to our network. We've already committed to a revolving loan fund, or R or L loan, to the tune of around $40 million to construct the water reclamation and influence pump stations. And we've issued a bond for the West River Community Center improvements at just under $18 million. So those are commitments we have made and cannot shirk those responsibilities. So I'm really going to try to stay away from individual projects tonight. I'd like to provide you with this document in a revised format at a future City Commission meeting, but I really wanted to go over some of the expectations and some of the work that has been done by city staff to this point. And one probably final comment that I heard with regularity in meeting with Commerce staff and others is there's an expectation that the City of Dickinson and other oil-impacted communities do have to shoulder some of the burden when it comes to financing these projects. They're under tremendous pressure from communities outside of the oil-impact area who are also growing and have had to finance their debt or their growth through the issuance of debt. So it's a delicate balancing act for them to make sure that any additional funds for western oil cities are accommodated without, well, with keeping in mind the state as a whole and the impacts that happen across our state unrelated to oil. So are there any questions specifically about the worksheet or any of the columns that are on it? Or in general?
I think it's important when we hear those comments about how other cities in, let's say, the eastern half of North Dakota have had to, you know, incur debt for growth. They're dealing with growth rates that are significantly less than the communities in the west, and they're dealing with growth that is inherently less risky. Our growth is dependent on one metric. It's called the price of oil. And historically, it's, you know, been volatile. And so we're shouldering a tremendous amount of risk, whereas the cities in the east that are growing have a lower, more stable growth pace, more predictable, and they have a much more diverse economy driving their growth. And so they're dealing with a lot less risk. And I think it's, those of us in policymaking positions, whether they're elected or appointed, I think we have to make that case over and over again and not just accept that, gee, we took on debt, therefore you should, too. I mean, these, the taxes, a portion of the taxes that the state is collecting from the oil industry were in lieu of property taxes, property taxes that would have went to our counties, our school districts, and our cities that we don't see. So I pretty much reject those comments by those government officials. I mean, that may be the politics, but we're taking tremendous, taking on tremendous risk, financial risk here in the west.
And President Johnson, you make excellent points. The fastest-growing city in the decade from 2000 to 2010 was West Fargo. They have a population today of around 26,000. I'm not exactly sure what that population was in 2000, but I believe it to be around that 15,000 mark. So they've grown about 11,000 people over the course of around 10 years. We, of course, have established or experienced a population gain of close to 8,000 people in three years, much higher percentage of growth, as you so rightly pointed out.
And our sister communities to the north of us, for example, Lockford City and Williston have grown at a faster rate than we have. And I think, anyway, the west, this western region is generating a tremendous amount of wealth, but they're shouldering a tremendous burden. And it's not just a financial burden.
And that was going to be my point, is that at no point in time was, I mean, I respect West Fargo and the growth that they've had, but they were never the first, third, or even eighth fastest-growing small town in America such as Williston, Dickinson, and Minot either are or have been.
I think it's really good that you're meeting, though, continue to meet with the state officials. Right now, you know, I know your job is to help make this city go, and many times you'd like to be physically right here, helping with the day-to-day management of the city. But these issues are very important to us. They're multimillion-dollar issues, and I encourage you to stay in touch with the, you know, the appointed officials at the state level and the elected officials there in telling our story and making sure they understand what our financial needs are here. So encourage you to keep doing that.
Thank you, President Johnson, and I certainly will. And if I could make one final comment, you know, these dollars that we're discussing on in terms of oil impacts, that we would get direct dollars from the state on, are so very important, but so are the dollars that are not necessarily directed towards individual cities, but result in projects that help. And I can't help but point out the DOT projects and the state investments that are happening in and around our area, including the bypasses, the interstate exchanges at 56, the current improvements on 30th and the overpass that's going in at State Avenue. Those are, those projects alone represent an investment in our community by the state of over $100 million that aren't reflected in the dollars we're going to get in terms of funding our additional projects, our local projects. So with that comment, I'll move on. The next item is a Stark County Joint Powers Agreement for inspections. As you are all aware, we have been providing building inspections and issuing building permits in the county, the unincorporated areas of the county for several years, utilizing the document, the Joint Powers Agreement document. The county has decided that they want to establish a building department that will issue their own building permits and conduct their own inspections in the unincorporated areas of Stark County. We are certainly supportive of that and doing whatever we can to aid in their development of that department. But it does mean that as of January 1 of 2014, that all building permits in Stark County will be issued by Stark County staff and/or contracted staff. We'll cease issuing building permits in the unincorporated areas in Stark County on December 16 of 2013, and we are continuing to negotiate the details of the Joint Powers Agreement because we'd like to retain the ability to issue building permits and conduct inspections in the city ETZ area. That area right now is up to two miles beyond our existing city limits. We have expanded our city limits several times, but we have not yet expanded that ETZ area. We will be bringing forth to the City Commission the boundaries that would include that expanded area to take full advantage of the two-mile ETZ for a later, at a later date. But that is something that we are negotiating with the county as we speak. They would like to eliminate the 90-day period. You have indicated at a previous meeting that you're fine with eliminating or not adhering to that 90-day termination period. So just an update. We'll continue to update you as we move on, but that's the path that we're on today. Any question? Oh, we're at, is there a timetable?
Yeah, I think this is a good time for you to break. We have a 5:15 timetable agenda item. That's to hear a presentation on the quiet zones, this is railroad crossings. Yes, you guys, you gentlemen, can come up, introduce yourselves, and we'll hear your I'm in the way.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission members. I'm Bob Swanson with Ronnie Engineering. We're here this afternoon to provide an update on the rail crossing quiet zone assessment. Our design team includes SRF Consulting Group, and Rick Lane will speak to you in a few minutes with some valuable insight on this topic. Our team has been retained by the city to conduct a quiet zone assessment, which will identify the rail crossing improvements required for quiet zone implementation. The amount of rail traffic through the city has increased in recent years, and the city is investigating options to minimize the impacts of train horn noise in the community while improving safety for at-grade roadway rail crossings. The quiet zone rule issued by the Federal Railroad Administration offers the opportunity to achieve this objective. At the conclusion of the quiet zone assessment, the city will have the information necessary to move forward with implementation of a quiet zone in Dickinson. The first step of the quiet zone process has already occurred in the form of the diagnostic meeting. The diagnostic occurred in early October and included field visits, briefings with the stakeholders, and summarizing their comments. At this time, I'd like to invite our design partner, Rick, to expand on the diagnostic as well as some of the details about the assessment. Feel free to ask questions during the presentation; otherwise, we're anticipating some time at the end for that purpose. I'd like to approach and hand out a copy of this overhead to each commission member.
Thank you. I'm Rick Lane with SRF Consulting Group. We, as Bob said, are working with Ronnie to provide the diagnostic side of the quiet zone. Bob's group has done the survey work and some design work related to that. As Bob noted, in early October, we did a diagnostic, and all of the locations you see up here are locations that I'll mention and go over real quickly in a minute. But at least three of those are outside the city limits, 114th on the west, 30th Avenue on the west, State Street you're very aware of with the new underpass coming in, Third Avenue, Sixth Avenue. And this shows up as 10th Avenue on the railroads listing, but it's also known as Schnell Crossing. And there's a crossing out here that's a private crossing at 25th. And then we also looked at Lehigh. And as, at the conclusion of the analysis, the city can change, leave in, leave out crossings that are on the ends. And so it doesn't necessarily have to include all of these. We looked at all of these to give you information on those, to determine how many between you and your partner, the county, that you might want to include in a quiet zone. Just a couple of specifics about quiet zone. They have to be at least a half mile long. All the public crossings must meet some, what we call, prequalifying criteria. They have to have gates and lights. They have to have quiet or constant warning time circuitry. And they have to have power-out indicators. And as we go through these individual ones, I won't point it out particularly, but if they didn't have like the power-out or the constant warning time, that's been added in our early cost estimates. The quiet zone is established on a risk basis. The national significant risk threshold, which just changed on November 26, previous to November 26, in fact, some of our slides that were prepared prior to 26 still have the 13,337 or 377. But the National Risk Index is the, basically, the average of the risk calculator for all of the gated crossings in the United States. So that represents the average. And one way to get a quiet zone is to be able to reduce your risk index below the national level. Not always easy to do because the national level is really quite low compared to some urban crossings like you have here, because it includes a lot of rural gated crossings. The risk index with horns, that's your risk index that's out there today because the horns are blowing. So risk index with horns is where you're starting today as a risk factor and So, risk index with horns is where you're starting today as a risk factor, and I will show you what that is later. A quiet zone risk index is the risk level after the corridor's been adjusted for the lack of horns. In other words, the concept is you're at a level today, risk level today with the horns blowing. You take the horns away, that risk level theoretically goes up because the horns are no longer being sounded. You install safety measures, which brings that risk level back down, and that then becomes, after you've installed the safety improvements, you recalculate the risk, and that brings the risk back down, and that's your quiet zone risk index. And in order to get a quiet zone, you have to be, your quiet zone risk index either has to be below that national level, the 14,347, or it has to be below the risk index that you started with while the horns were blowing. There it is, right there. The quiet zone risk index needs to be below either the risk index with horns or the national risk level. If it's below the risk level with horns, you don't have to do an annual review. If you meet a quiet zone by just getting below the national level, you have to have it reviewed every year. It's either a three- or five-year review cycle if you meet it by going below the risk index with horns. How do we do this? We install what we call supplementary safety measures, or we install alternate safety measures. And the supplementary safety measures that are widely recognized by FRA, in fact, are written, read into the FRA ruling, are the four quadrant gate systems, medians, or channelization devices, closures, obviously if you close one, and in your case, you do have one of those because we're taking credit for the State Street overpass. The one-way streets is a way you can do it. You change the street to the one-way gives you an opportunity to completely gate it. And wayside horns, which aren't a real popular one. Wayside horns replaces the train horn with a horn at the crossing that blows up and down the street. Most cities don't consider that a quiet zone once they, it's certainly a little less and the noise extends out a less distance, but not really a very good option. The alternate safety measures are, say, change, and the most obvious one is you have to have medians of a certain length. If you can't build that median long enough to meet their minimum length requirement, but you can build a, because the minimum length requirement is 60 feet, and we have one location where we're providing a shorter median than that, so it does become an alternate safety measure, but you still get credit for that, it's just a different calculation. Just real quickly, there's a lot of information on these slides. I'm not going to go into real depth. I'm just going to describe that out at 114th, what we were able to install medians, which is generally the lowest cost options, utilizing the existing gates, a little bit of road widening. And with that, the cost is around $100,000 for that particular option, but that would qualify that crossing to be part of a quiet zone. At 30th, very similar. We talked about a little bit of curb and gutter to identify this particular access into the recreational area there. But again, we show medians in the roadway, some minor widenings, and again, reusing the existing gates that are in place. And that is about $76,000. State Street, as I said, you get 100% risk reduction there with the new grade separation that is being worked on today. Third Street, I mentioned that we had one location where we had a median that didn't meet length, so this would be considered an ASM. But what we're doing here, and there's some notes on here that indicate some adjustments to driveways, but again, we are able to put in medians and use the existing gates that are there. One thing that I'll point out here and that we talked about when we did the diagnostic is pedestrian movements. And what you'll see here are two pedestrian gates with mazes. And what that does, without the horns blowing, if you have a strong pedestrian crossing, like this one is a well-defined pedestrian crossing, you're not necessarily required to put in the gates, but it's strongly suggested that you do. FRA actually doesn't give you credit one way or the other for adding pedestrian gates, but we have shown them in here as we think is a reasonable recommendation for this type of location. And again, what that does is as a pedestrian is approaching, that gate comes down at the same time the entrance gate comes down, and that keeps pedestrian from getting into the crossing area. So, this one, again, we're able to put in the medians and use the existing gates and make the pedestrian improvements, and we're at about $164,000 for those improvements. Sixth Avenue, again, medians, and you'll note here that we show 60-foot medians on either side. When there's a driveway, commercial driveway, that's considered an intersection. This is obviously an intersection, so is this commercial driveway. The minimum length you can have to meet an SSM is 60 feet. So, like in this particular case, we're able to get the 60 feet in there, so this gets full credit as an SSM. Back here at Third, this will get a lesser credit, but still gets credit even though this is only 25 feet. Again, here on Sixth, we made some minor access adjustments, and we're at about 50, almost 55,000 at this location. This was the most difficult one that we scratched our heads over a lot in the field. And the most expensive, but the safest SSM is the four quadrant gate. And that's what's shown here at this point at the draft level. It requires four gates. There's two existing gates, two new gates. What this does is virtually gate off the crossing so no vehicle can get in there. The gate systems work in conjunction with these loops that are in there. When a car approaches, the, what we call the entrance gate, if a car is approaching from this side, this would be the entrance gate, goes down first, either by a timed interval or based on clearing the loops, the exit gate comes down. And so, the, you got four gates, they gate it off. You can see the activity around here, and you know, you build a median all the way back here. These guys are going across all the time. There's some issues with medians in this location. So, at this point, and we're going to continue to work with your city staff on some other options here, but the issue with four quadrant gates is down here on the bottom line. They're a much higher cost, my, the much higher cost than just doing medians. You know, the medians ones were in the 50,000 to 70,000 range, and you can see the difference here. And what we did do is we looked at an ASM here that would have very short medians, and we think we can make it work, and we'll work with your staff to see if that's something that should be brought forward in the final. But we're kind of starting with the highest level of safety, and we'll work down from there as we go through this process. There's a private crossing at what's called 25th Avenue. It's just west, or just east of town, goes through a farmer's field. In fact, he's even got gates there at that crossing. On a private crossing, the FRA doesn't require you to do any improvements at a crossing other than letting the landowner know that the quiet zone is included, that the crossing is included in a quiet zone. And so, no improvements required at that particular crossing. And then the last one we looked at was Lehigh. And again, here, here I'll point out, the standard length when it's not being shortened by an intersection is 100 feet. And the ones on the west end that we talked about at 114th and 30th, for instance, we had the full 100-foot medians as well. That's the standard length when it's not shortened due to an intersection. And so, here, we've got the, using the existing gates, one needs to be located because of the widening. And again, we're in about the 90,000 bracket here. Just to review those, that, again, I won't go through these one by one, but bottom line cost, if you include everything that's included in the draft at this point, is 1.4 million. But you'll see that most of that cost is here at 10th. And we'd like to suggest some other things at 10th, and we've done some early looks that could bring this, that would bring this down into the 700,000 range if the city is comfortable with a lesser improvement at the 10th. And so, we will bring that through as part of the, as part of the next draft. So, what does that mean? I said I would talk about the quiet zone levels. This is your baseline risk. And what this shows is, right here, today, your risk index with horns is 18,000. Risk level has got no, does not have any units attached to it. It's an algorithm which has a lot of information about the safety, the volumes, the locations, train volumes, all those kinds of things. Comes out with a, with a, with a risk number. And quiet zone risk index, in here, you'll see this column that says SSM. So, this is, if you took the horns away and did nothing, your risk index would go from 18,000 up to 30,000. And one thing I'll point out here, State Street, and one of the good reasons for a grade separation there, you'll see that it has the highest risk index of all the crossings we're talking about. So, this is an ASM worksheet because one of the locations, Third Street, was an ASM. And so, we worked through the equation, and what that does, here's the national level, and the old number is in there because like I said, it went into the, into the Federal Register on the 26th, and we didn't have time to update this. So, that number is constantly, changes about, once a year. The risk level with horns is 18, and if we installed everything that we talked about here earlier, your risk level would be down to 4,000. So, you would easily meet. Now, there was a, if we back up a couple, there was a fairly significant cost here. There's two ways to lower this cost. One, like we talked at 10th, come up with an ASM there in place of an SSM that would lower the cost. That's one way. The other way is you are not required to include every crossing that you want in a quiet zone to have an improvement. As a safety person, as a traffic engineer, we always recommend you consider an improvement at every intersection that you want to include in a quiet zone. It's, you know, the whole thing is based on risk. But if the city decides they're comfortable at some of the crossings of not having an improvement, you could decide at, at say, Third Street to not do anything there, and lesser improvement at 10th. And we've played around with some other ones, but you could still bring your risk level down low enough to do it. So, that's the next step, is to work with your city staff to say, what other things are you comfortable with? So, what would the next steps be? We, obviously, the next step is work with your city staff, come up with kind of a final recommendation to the city council, city commission, excuse me. And then what we recommend, if the city is comfortable, the next thing that you do is notice of intent. The notice of intent is just what it sounds like. You send out a document to all of the, your stakeholders, FRA, the railroad, the State Rail Department, and it outlines, it says, we are going to do these improvements at these crossings. And based on that, we're going to bring our risk level down to this level. And if we do that, we can have a quiet zone. So, if we do these, and during that 60-day review period, all those agencies during the 60-day review period, they get the comment, and you can address their comments and move on. But the notice of intent doesn't obligate you to do any improvement, to do anything. What it does is it alerts them that you're interested and intend to make these improvements and acquire a quiet zone. Once the notice of intent has been run and approved by FRA, you have a very extended time with, they, literally, the rule does not put a sunset on a notice of intent. You know, if it went several years, you'd want to look at it again, but you have, that's why we encourage people, it's not a high-cost thing to do, to do the notice of intent because you know that if you do those, what your comments are and that you can get a quiet zone. And there's virtually very little cost for you to move to that step. So, after that, then you would start the implementation process of getting cost estimates, more detailed cost estimates for improvements. We always like to remind people that if you are going to move ahead, when you deal with improvements from Burlington Northern, it can take a year to 18 months to get those improvements in place. So, then, once you've made those improvements and finalized those, you do a thing called the notice of establishment. So, after your improvements are installed, they're reviewed by yourselves, FRA, the railroad, and the state, and everybody says, yes, you did what you had in your notice of intent. You do a notice of establishment, it goes, bails out to the same people as the notice of intent, and 21 days later, the horns would cease. One thing I always tell people, that a quiet zone is, there's three things involved, the cost, the safety, and the quality of life. And for the city of Dickinson, so those are the things that we'll talk about here over, between now and making a final recommendation, is that what are those trade-offs and what is the city comfortable with? With that, we're open to questions. I went a little long.
How many trains a day are coming through Dickinson currently, and what are your estimates for the future?
Well, we've tried hard to get estimates from Burlington Northern on what that may go up. They say they know it's going to go up, but the, but they're not able to tell us. If you just bear with me a second, I do have those numbers. According to the current inventories, there's, they only show 28 trains a day. Now, when this inventory was updated last, is, I'm sure that it has increased over 28 since that time. But all of these inventories, they're, they're at the, at the 28th number. We asked BN if they had an updated number. We haven't received one from them. And what they tell us when we say, you know, what, can you give us a number of the growth? And they say, well, we know it's going to go up, but we don't really know that exact number. And so, we, when they put them on, what they'll direct us to is this inventory, and this inventory is off the FRA website. That's what they direct us to, to find those numbers.
Well, we know, once the refinery's operating, some of their refined product is going to be shipped by rail. And I think, you know, the county just, or at least the zoning acted on, I think, another rail unloading facility, which would probably bring more rail traffic. So, it's probably safe to assume that we're probably going to reach at least 30 trains per day through here. 28's a lot to start with.
Before we go out and take the time to sit there and count it, I think the number's more than 28, based on what we've done in other spots like Bismarck.
You think it's greater than this, than 28?
Yeah. We haven't done an actual count, but we have done, like in Bismarck and Fargo. Fargo is in the 70 train a day range, and Bismarck is in the 40 train a day range. My guess would be you're over 30, and I would, my guess would be that that will go up probably by a third or more over the years. But those are just kind of numbers that we've talked with BN about, but they won't give us any hard and fast numbers. But we have done, we do have higher numbers that we've counted for, for Bismarck and Fargo.
Are there other questions?
President Johnson, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Lane, could you talk about, you know, they're called quiet zones. You talked in the beginning about the elimination of horns, but a quiet zone doesn't necessarily mean it will eliminate every single train horn in and around Dickinson. Is that accurate? And could you talk about, expand on that a little bit?
Yes, that's true. The way the FRA rule is set up is that anytime an engineer feels that there's a danger, he is allowed to use the horn. And so, it's a safety device that the engineer is allowed to use. The other times is when there are active crews on the main line, and you have an active yard within, within the city. So, there would be times when a train is approaching, if there's active, there's people actively, BN staff actively working around the track within the yard, they will also sound the horn. And the other thing that, we did look at the spurs. We didn't bring those up today based on time, but the number of trains going across the spur crossings, like on Broadway and such, is a much lower number. And a lot of areas, even though we looked at them, a lot of areas don't do spurs because they're generally in the daytime, and they're generally a low number. So, if you did the main line, here's the deal with the spur. The spur has to be hired, handled as an actual separate quiet zone. So, you would have your main line quiet zone. You'd have to have a quiet zone for the west spur on Broadway, for the east spur on Broadway, and for the one out on Valard. And so, you would end up with quite a number of quiet zones. But so, in But so, in your case, if you didn't approach the spurs as well, when those spurs are actively crossings, and we were out at Valard, and they never did sound the horn, but they had an active crossing guard there when they brought the train across. So there are situations, number one, when the engineer feels that there's a danger, he will use the horn. And number two, when there's personnel working around the track area, they will use the horn.
I have one additional question. You know, you mentioned that the number wasn't revised, I think you talked about the National Safety Index was about fourteen thousand, now it was eleven thousand last year, if I'm not mistaken?
It was thirteen and something.
Okay. My point is, once you're granted a quiet zone, you want to make sure that your index number is fairly low, because that number does change annually, and so you could essentially lose your quiet zone status, could you not, if that number changed to a number below your quiet zone number?
Right. There's a couple of different ways that you can lose your status. If you qualify by simply saying, I'm going to be below the national risk level, the national risk level changes, and you're all of a sudden above it, you would lose it, and then you would have to make some improvements. They give you, do give you a time period to make those improvements, but you'd have to make additional improvements. In most of the quiet zones that we've worked, the risk level with horns is actually higher than the national level. And they allow you to have a quiet zone by getting below the risk level with horns. Obviously, especially first time through, we always encourage getting that risk level as low as possible, and we got this one down to four thousand and something. That's why you have some room to play with if there are crossings that you'd be comfortable with not to do it. But what we wouldn't want to see is if the risk level with horns is eighteen, and you get down to seventeen-five, we would say, no, you got to do more. Because you might have one incident out there that would pop you above the risk level with horns when they checked it. And you'd have to go back in and do another improvement, and there's possibility that the horns would blow during that time. So you want to have a really good buffer between your risk level with horns and the level that you're comfortable with having within the city.
If I may, just one comment, you know, you mentioned the safety, cost, and quality of life are the three main reasons why quiet zones are implemented. And as we move down the process of trying to revitalize our downtown, one of the biggest components of that is establishing a residential sector in our downtown that's much greater than it is today. And obviously, if horns are going off twenty-eight or more times a day, that would have an impact on the viability, I believe, of that residential sector in our downtown. So, just a comment in general.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Lane, each of your cost estimates is broken into a BNSF portion and city portion. Can you explain that?
There are certain improvements, like moving the railroad gate, or installing constant warning time, or installing the additional concrete crossing material, when some of these are widened to make room for the median, that BN designs and installs themselves. And so after you do your Notice of Intent that I talked about, you would start with, talking with BN about developing a railroad agreement for those improvements. We're doing that in a couple of places right now. And they write an agreement, and they want dollars upfront to do the estimate. And then when you get that agreement with them, that's when that twelve-to-eighteen-month clock starts. And so there's, and all of these are some improvements that would need to be made by the railroad. And so that's why we separate those out. The other improvements that are by the city, or county, or township, or whoever it might be here, that we show, that you can, you can have Bob or somebody design those, bid those, and build those, your portion of those yourselves.
Okay. And then, do you know offhand what the risk level would be without the Tenth Avenue East, the Schnell Crossing?
Matter of fact.
If we did no work on that crossing?
Matter of fact, I do. If you want to take a minute, I'll describe that. What we looked at is installing short medians on either side and maintaining, and we'd have to do some other checks yet, but, and maintaining the existing gates. And if we did that, your cost would go down to, you would save six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Your overall cost for the quiet zone would go down from one point four million to point seven eight million, or seven hundred and eighty thousand. would come down to, would be at six thousand and change. And so you would be significantly below the risk level with horns.
Are you comfortable with that margin?
Yes.
From what you've seen?
Yes.
And did you, I expect it was outside the scope of what you guys did, but did you look at moving that crossing location or anything to help with that cost?
No, we did talk about closing it, and we looked around to see, kind of just eyeballed, see if there was a better location, or how far vehicles would have to travel a lot of their way. And if you didn't have another spot to cross, it would be quite a ways, but we didn't put a lot of effort into finding another crossing. But we do think that technically you could do nothing there, which I would be a little squeamish with, with all the activity that's there. But what we've suggested, and we'll talk with your staff on that, are some shorter medians, plus some curbing, to kind of identify that crossing area, to keep everybody out of the crossing area. And it would qualify based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we have a five-thirty public hearing scheduled. This is in regard to construction standards ordinance. There was an open meeting today from two till three o'clock to allow those in the construction industry to comment. At this time, we would declare the public hearing open. Mr. Kubis, is there anything you'd like to say before we ask for public comment?
President Johnson, Commissioner, just to reiterate where we're at in the process, we had the first reading of this ordinance on the November eighteenth commission meeting. Like President Johnson stated, we held an informational open house for the public this afternoon, holding the public hearing this evening with our second reading, and hopefully adoption at our December sixteenth meeting. The draft of these documents, both the technical specifications and the standard drawings for construction, are available for viewing on the website right now, on Dickinsongov.com. So interested parties can go there, view those, download them if they would like, print out a copy if they would like. And we'll be working with staff to get a means of getting comments forwarded on to city staff through the website. Right now, we hope to adopt something similar to the draft that's on the website, but do plan on implementing change throughout the year as we get comments from the construction industry. But, and the ordinance allows for that, with notice to the commission that we can change and update these standard drawings. We're also looking to get some standardized front-end documents, the construction contract documents that would go along with this, to use some industry-standard contract documents. But with that, I'd open it up to any questions that the commission might have.
Yes, I have one question. How was it received today, or just in general, from the construction entities?
We've had a positive response. There was pretty good turnout today. I would say about thirty people probably came in the first hour, so it was what I considered pretty good turnout. And we've had positive comments. I think people are looking forward to getting standards in place. It'll take a little while to get used to them, but as we implement them, like I said, we'll have the means to change these throughout the construction season. So, it's been positive so far.
Good.
All right. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding these construction standards, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, well, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other comments or questions by city staff? Or city commissioners? Okay, well then, we'll move on, and this will be on the agenda for the second reading at our second meeting in December. Okay. So, we'll go back to city administrator reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. Just a couple more. The community service program, this is a program that's been in existence in the community for quite some time. This program, if you get in municipal or district court, you could be assigned to do community service hours based upon the infraction that occurred. It has been struggling for the last few years, financially and otherwise. So they, we have offered to take that program over as a city, and provide the staffing for that program with existing staff, and augmentation of staff as well. They are what appears to be supportive, the board, the Community Service Board, we met with them, are members of that board on three different occasions now, and they are excited, I think is the word to use, about the city taking that program over. We would continue to receive the revenue sources that the existing program receives, and it would provide, I believe, stability to that program. It would provide more options for those people who are in need of sites to fulfill their community service hours. And it could provide a pool of what I'll call labor for certain community projects, where community service hours would be ideal in completing those projects. And I think of things like cleanliness in the community, picking up trash and such around Highway twenty-two, twenty-first, all of our major transportation corridors, maybe out at our landfill and the adjacent land around there. We currently use staff and other sources for that, so. But this also covers more than just Stark County, or Dickinson and Stark County, it would also include a broader southwest region. The vast majority of the people that receive community service hours are from Dickinson. So, I just wanted to mention that this negotiation is happening, and if the city commission has any comments with regard to moving forward, I'd love to hear them now, because we are getting in what I call the final stages of negotiation.
I would assume silence is support?
Yeah, my only concern would be staffing, you know. I know we're busy with lots of things, but if you're comfortable with staffing, I think it's great.
We've already identified a staff member who I think will be excellent. The program would be housed out of the police department, and more specifically, out of dispatch. I think it's important to have a staff member who is within that system of law enforcement. So, appreciate the comment.
Yeah, I would hate to see the program go away, and I would love to see it be better utilized. There are lots of areas in this community that we could use some community service.
Thank you. The next one then is a subarea plan. This, because of the infrastructure that's being constructed to connect the refinery with the city of Dickinson's wastewater treatment facility, that's going to provide a pipe that we have oversized in our design, knowing that there'd be a great many, either individuals or corporations, that will want to connect to that pipe and allow the city of Dickinson to provide them service. All of this land that would service that pipe is outside of the city of Dickinson city limits. So, the concept here is that we'd create a subarea plan, a mini comprehensive plan, we'll call it, that will allow us to address the issues that can come about when people want to connect to the infrastructure that's in the ground. We have a meeting set up, we've issued the letters to landowners in the adjacent area, and we are having a meeting tomorrow afternoon, where we will present what that subarea plan, RFP, will look like, and gain the feedback from landowners in the area. Mr. Cortan and I will be the major, the two presenting at that group, and we'll certainly bring back feedback to the city commission based upon that landowner meeting. Mr. Cortan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just for the commission's awareness, we have a draft copy, and after the meeting, we'll report back, and I would anticipate in December, we would bring forth the RFP for your acceptance, and then we could move forward on the project if that's the desire from the commission. The elements, just so you're aware of, is already mentioned, we would have a land use element, would include zoning districts, a transportation, designate transportation corridors, capital facilities, how we'd pay for larger projects in that area, infrastructure and utilities, a community facilities element, which would address police, fire, sheriff, obviously for the rural portion of that, and emergency medical services. And then, I think a big key in this one would be an annexation plan. That area would need to be annexed in, it would be a phasing plan of how we would perceive. That area is roughly five thousand acres, obviously, we wouldn't annex it all at one time, that would be many decades potentially for that, so we would have a phasing plan attached with that. So I think that that would be a good one to augment our comprehensive plan, and it would be adopted, or augment our comprehensive plan as an amendment to it, or an addendum to our comprehensive plan. So with that, I have any questions? If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, Mr. Kessel or myself.
What has been the county involvement so far, or what will the county involvement be?
I presented the subarea plan concept at a Stark County Commission meeting, I'm going to say three months ago, I'd have to, better to find that date for you. Their reaction was, they felt that so their existing ordinances cover planning in that area quite well, and that they weren't interested in participating in the subarea plan. Since that time, I've had an exchange of information with the Stark County Commission president, and invited him to the meeting to make sure that he can express the concerns or comments based on Stark County. So they've been invited, they've been informed, and hopefully they'll continue to participate in the process.
Thank you.
Okay. One final comment. Depending upon the landowner reaction in that area, it is, as Mr. Cortan mentioned, a rather large area, it would have an effect upon the direction of future growth in Dickinson. It may mean that we'll see less growth on the north side of town, maybe less growth on the east side, or maybe less growth on the south side. Obviously, five thousand acres is a huge territory, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that even though this is the area being planned for, it could affect other areas of the community specifically. The next item is the library director. Our current director, Ms. Posh, is retiring. Sorry to see her go, she's an excellent library director, and her end date will be at the end of December. We have been through the process of interviewing, we made an offer to Mary Souci out of Illinois. She initially declined that offer. I have talked to library director Posh about potentially extending or becoming a contracted staff after her official retirement date, just to provide a ten-to-twenty hours a week for a short period, so that she could train a new director, or provide guidance to a new director. She's willing to do that. And with that knowledge, I have contacted Ms. Souci again to see if she'd be interested in starting at a later date. Her initial declining of the position was almost completely based upon the start date. She simply couldn't fulfill the start date and therefore declined. So I'm really hopeful that with a new start date, that she may change her opinion on the matter. If she doesn't, we'll have to start the process over and re-advertise for the position. And the next and last item that I have for you this evening is a report that the North Coast Insurance Department's fire payment, we get an annual amount, and it's based upon the amount of premiums that are issued within our city limits. A percentage of that is collected by the state, and then they used to return half of that amount of that amount back to the city. Recent legislative changes have been positive for us in that regard, where they've changed to the whole amount is now remitted back to the city. So it means that we've doubled that source of revenue to about $161,000. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Fire Chief Seavock really wants all that money to stay in his budget, and I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to accommodate that request, Chief. But it's a positive, no doubt. That would conclude my reports unless there's anything else the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments, questions for the city administrator? All right, we'll move to engineering. Mr. Kubus?
President Johnson and commission. Recently, the DOT had bid a project on Highway 22 on behalf of the City of Dickinson. It was a tree planting project that went roughly from the city limits north towards the county line, generally encompassing last year's paving and widening project on Highway 22. DOT received bids and opened those bids on November 15th. The low and only bid was from Hoffman and McNamara out of Hastings, Minnesota, for $259,000. The estimate on the project was $150,000, with the federal funds limited at $125,000. I talked to both the design engineer, the landscape architect who designed the project, and the contractor, who's the apparent low bid. And it seems that the major cause for the increased costs were for soil amendments, bringing in better topsoil to increase the survivability chance of those trees. Right now, with it being a DOT bid project, the options on the table are to award that contract at the $259,000 bid amount, or to reject the bids. The $125,000 that was made available to the city would still be available if we wanted to rebid the project, maybe reducing some of the soil amendments and rebidding it later this coming spring with a fall completion date. And with the amount of overage, you know, it's $109,000 over the engineer's estimate, city staff recommends rejecting the bids and rebidding later in the spring for fall completion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kubus. So if we agree with you, you would require action, then a motion to reject the bid?
That's correct, Mr. President. We would ask that you would make a motion with respect to your intention.
Well, before we ask for any motions, we'll allow the commission to weigh in here with their opinions and their...
Mr. President, I have a question. If the plan is to start from city to the city border north up to the Stark County line, how can Stark County invited into this here project also?
Commissioner Steiner, as I understand, this is an old program called the Transportation Enhancement Program. It no longer exists, but the funds are still there. And on these types of projects, it requires a local government sponsor, and in this case, it was the City of Dickinson who was the sponsor, requested the funds, applied for the funds, and was granted the funds. All the work would be done in the DOT right away, so while it's outside of city limits, it's all on DOT property. And so my understanding is that the county wasn't involved in this. This was a city requested project to beautify the entrance into Dickinson.
Other comments, questions? Anybody opposed to rejecting the bids as recommended by the city engineer?
Mr. President, I'd make the motion that we rejected the bids and resubmit. That's done.
Second.
So we have the motion to reject, and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stugard?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Want to continue, Mr. Kubus?
I have a couple reports to give. A month ago, a resident, Mr. Gary Zent, came in and made a presentation to this commission about requested safety improvements at the southern end of State Avenue, specifically from Diamond Drive to 8th Street Southwest. And we've taken a look at the area. The concern was vehicles that have left the roadway there weren't able to navigate a curve. The first thing we did is we looked into the engineering of the project. This was a project that was designed by the North Dakota DOT, meets all the safety standards, the engineering standards for a 35 mile an hour street. But we do have two incidences where vehicles have left the roadway, left our right of way, and damaged property off the highway. So we looked into some remediation that we could do, seeing that the street itself meets the safety requirements for a 35 mile an hour, a 35 mile an hour zone. And we looked at four options. I think we had initially talked about three options, which were a barrier wall that might provide some noise abatement as well, guardrail to keep those vehicles from leaving our right of way, and traffic signs to just increase awareness that it is a 35 mile an hour zone, maybe some Chevron signs, which are the angled arrow signs that you see on curves in rural highways typically. And a fourth option that we looked at was landscaping. You can see that they are varying in price quite wild, widely, with the barrier wall coming in at an estimated cost of $281,000, guardrail at an estimated cost of $30,000, landscaping at $9,300, and traffic signs of $2,300. And I think weighing the benefits and the actual functionality of an improvement, in talking with some other city staff, we would recommend that a landscaping improvement be considered further if any improvements were looking to be made. Traffic signs might be a more appropriate engineering solution, but really, the vehicles that are causing these problems, there's traffic signs out there right now that say it's a 35 mile an hour zone. They're not seeing these. We can supplement any one of these with some additional enforcement, moving around the flashing speed limit sign where it's radar controlled and you see your speed limit sign. We can look at other options that would supplement a hard improvement, but right now, landscaping seems to be a good option. It would be a visual enhancement to the area. And my understanding was that there may have even been some plantings that were there initially in 1988 when State Avenue was constructed, but with the drought that we had that year, those trees didn't make it. So with that, I could open it up to any questions that you might have.
Can you expand on the landscaping? I mean, would it, I think we're looking for something that would give immediate protection. I'm not, when you talk about landscaping, you're not necessarily talking about trees that take 20 years to grow up before they're effective, are you?
Well, what we would look at, it would be a tree planting or hedges. And the trees that we would look at planting similar to on the DOT project would be a one and a half inch diameter tree to a two inch diameter tree that wouldn't necessarily stop a vehicle tomorrow, but I think in the long run would be, you know, a protective measure that would provide some visual aesthetics as well.
Mr. President, I could just add to that. I would think a hedge row or hedges would work. Unfortunately, I have direct experience with that. 10 years ago, when I was in Washington State, I hit an ice patch, went 45 degree angle at 60 miles an hour, hit a hedge row next to a fire station. It caught my undercarriage, it didn't flip me and the rest, and slowed me down within 10 to 20 feet. I demolished a hedge row. That being said, I didn't flip, and it caused a very safe descent, you know, through my speed. So I have personal experience with that. That can work. That'd be my recommendation for it.
So if we planted a hedge row this spring, would it be effective? I mean, how soon would it be effective?
We can get them at various sizes. We'd have to look into that, and I don't know if that was part of the cost for that. It might have been just at a typical shrub. Whenever you plant them, they may be only a foot, foot and a half high, and that's not going to do much at all. So you can get them at higher rates. That would be something, it'd be a little more expensive, I would say, maybe than a $9,300, but you can get them at at least two to three foot high when you plant them, and that would be something that would help reduce the speeds dramatically and provide a safe stop if you went through that.
Mr. Kubus, do you know if there are, are there approved guardrails that could be temporary? Thinking about cable? Do you know?
Well, the approved guardrail that you typically see, cable guardrail, or the W-beam, which is more common, I wouldn't consider either one of those temporary necessarily. They would each have to be, you know, post-drilled into the ground.
Mr. Jackson, are you thinking if we could kind of do a combination of both the hedges and the guardrail? Give the hedges a chance to establish themselves, and then at a later date, remove the guardrail? Is that where you're going?
That's what I was thinking. I don't know if that's practical or not. But I'm also wondering about trees, in spite of Mr. Cortan's experience. You know, is there a safety issue there with a vehicle going off the road? I'm saying when that tree is 10 inches in diameter.
There sure could be, but I think there's a safety issue with the vehicle hitting house, too. All of this would be outside, in the engineering world, we call the clear zone for roadway. And for a 35 mile an hour roadway with relatively flat slopes, the clear zone that we have to maintain for our roadway and for our vehicles is about 14 feet from the edge of the driving lane. And so once you're past the sidewalk just a few feet, we've essentially maintained a clear zone for our vehicles to drive on. And we plant trees in our right of way all throughout town, not in this area right now. But, so we would be maintaining a clear zone for our vehicles to drive in, creating a landscape buffer, which we do on many projects. Here, the impetus for the landscaping is maybe a little bit different, but we wouldn't be violating any engineering standards for safety in our, near the roadway.
Well, I like the landscaping thing, but, you know, I do also wonder how long it'll take for it to be effective, in spite of Mr. Cortan's experience.
The other temporary solution for a more permanent barrier such as guardrail would be maybe Jersey barrier, or sometimes they're not very pleasant to look at, but the barrels that they set up near interstate underpasses. While they're not temporary, they can be moved at a time, so.
I guess, I kind of like the direction that Mr. Jackson was going, that, you know, long term, I think the trees and the hedges would, could be an effective barrier. But I think in the short term, they're not. And we have, you know, a situation in our community where it's a very busy community, a lot of state people coming, and we've had two incidents there in about a year's time. I would feel more comfortable if we embarked on that dual strategy, maybe put the guardrail in. The guardrail can be removed at a later date if it isn't aesthetically pleasing, but also then do the landscaping alternative. And once we're to a point where we think the landscaping would be effective, and if the staff and the commission and the neighborhood at that time would be okay with taking the guardrails out, then we could do that, but...
I'm guessing there'll be another area where we'll be able to repurpose the guardrail at another time even, you know, or another city project?
Well, I would assume that it's, you know, it'll take a few years for whatever we plant there to really take hold and mature. And I'm okay with, you know, doing, you know, if you do a combination of shrubbery or hedges and trees, too. But I think, you know, given the rapid growth we've had in our community and the demands on our police staff, you know, it's not going to be an area we're going to be able to patrol on a regular basis. It's, and, you know, I understand the signage, and there probably should be more signage, too, but I think the two incidents that we had, it probably didn't matter if there had been a lot of signs there. Those two were going to happen.
Well, we'll look into developing a plan then that includes both landscaping and guardrail. The cost that I was sharing with you for guardrail was for highway guardrail, W-beam guardrail, three cable guardrail, while it's used less, might be a little less expensive than that, so hopefully that'll bring the cost down a little bit if we do a dual strategy.
Mr. Zent, you're here. Did you want to comment at all on these alternatives? Yes, please come to the podium, and we'll give you an opportunity to weigh in on this discussion.
I needed to wish you guys Merry Christmas anyway, so that's why I'm here. But I got a couple questions. The, if you go with guardrail, would that be up on the top of the berm, or would that be next to the sidewalk? Whether it's temporary or permanent?
I think it would be closer to the top of the berm. Right now, I need to look at it a little more closely because there is that area between your back property line and your neighbor's back property line and the city's right of way. There's a parcel of land in there that I don't exactly know the ownership of that. The city's right of way ends near the top of that berm, though. And we need to keep it, like I mentioned before, away from the property, or from the roadway some distance to maintain that clear zone for the vehicles as well.
Okay. Just a couple comments. Thanks, President Johnson and city commissioners. I just, my name's Gary Zent. There were a couple comments made when we first brought this up, and I just wanted to clarify some of it. One of the comments was, we have to be careful as to what we're installing, so we're not endangering the motor in public. I guess one of my concerns there is, right now, what we have there, I did measure it, and Commissioner Steiner, you asked the question, what was the distance? It's 63 feet from the curb to the property line, okay? If you go up to the center of that berm, roughly it's about 31 to 31 and a half feet, okay? To give you an idea on distance on that, and again, I go back to, and I know the developer did it, but on State's addition north of the press, from the curb to the cement wall, it's 31 feet. And we have a dirt berm there, which is really good. That takes care of most of your safe drivers that may lose control, whether they're doing the speed limit, they don't come over the berm, it's not going to hurt them whatsoever. I don't know that we have to worry about motorists that are not being lawful, not doing the speed limit, and being outright careless as a liability. But in the instance of the individuals that hit our garage, they hit on the corner, if they'd have hit on the sidewall, they'd have went into the garage, and then there might have been a fire, and they were unresponsive. So you still are protecting the motorists, you know, on whatever you do. I like the idea of trees, but I won't be there by the time that they're going to be effective. At least, I don't think so. So if you do trees and a combination of guardrail, you know, anything's better than what we have right now, which is nothing. There may have been trees, I, you know, I don't recall. When I built, when I bought that lot, I think it was in 1980, of course, that berm wasn't there, and when they did states, they put the berm up. There may have been trees, but, and I had trees in the backyard until I got a fence, the snowmobilers took those out, so it's possible. But that is a route for the snowmobilers to leave, to go out into the fields, and then come back in. So if you put trees up there, you're going to have to do something that are, you know, higher than just the seedlings or whatever. Those are my concerns. The other question I guess I did have is, was DOT, you know, funding wise, were, how was that going to materialize on this, or was there any avenue on that?
I don't know that there would be any DOT funding. I think when we talked a month ago, a notification had come out from the DOT that they had, I guess for lack of a better term, a grant program for safety improvements. And looking more closely into that, it's for high crash intersections. that, it's for high-crash intersections, but they define what a high-crash intersection is, and there's only two in town that meet that criteria. And it's, they're both on Highway 22, one at Vallard and one at, yeah, at 15th Street and one at Vallard on Highway 22. So, this intersection or this stretch of State Avenue doesn't qualify for any DOT safety funding that I'm aware of right now.
Okay. I was just curious on that. Anyway, I wanted to bring that, you know, those items up to you guys and give you an idea on the footages and kind of a comparison of, I was hoping for a while, but again, I have to be realistic, too, and anything that we get is better than nothing. But if we do do trees, if that's what you decide on, you need something of medium size so they don't get run over by snowmobilers. They need a place to go in and out, too. And then, like I say, a combination of guardrail, something, because right now that wouldn't take care of the issues. The other concern that I have is once that overpass is built on the railroad, that is going to get even busier along with the truck route, because that's my only problem with using that street when I have to wait for a train. So, it's only going to get busier. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zent. Well, I think, you know, there's a consensus developing here that we're kind of in favor of both the long-term approach and the short term. So, you know, we'd encourage you to kind of move that direction, and what else to say? I guess that's about it.
President Johnson, if I could?
Yes.
I have maybe an alternative. Would the use of what I'll call landscape boulders provide an alternative to a guardrail? It would provide an immediate safety enhancement, plus it would be more aesthetically pleasing than a guardrail, and allow the trees to grow up. It would be, I can't imagine it'd be any less dangerous than a 10-inch diameter tree. And we have plenty of landscape boulders. Yeah. And/or the water reclamation facility.
I think we could, as long as we're careful that we're maintaining that clear-zone hazard, because I don't want to trade one hazard for another on some project that we did. Granted, all these things can be hazards. Guardrail is a crash-tested, approved device where a boulder isn't, neither is a tree, but I think it might be looked at differently. We can look into it, though. I know that the cost would be less. We do have the boulders on hand, so.
Well, it's readily apparent. You guys can discuss that in your staff meetings, though, and bring that back. You don't have to engineer it here. But I think in general, what we're hearing is, we're in favor of something that helps immediately, but if there's a better long-term approach, such as the landscape approach, that's fine, too. But, you know, we don't see it as an either-or. We see it as doing both. You want to continue on, then?
The last thing I had was a quick project update. I know our Public Works Director has some updates as well. So, what I was going to limit this to was a few walkthroughs that we've done with city staff, and a couple of updates on DOT projects that are happening in and around the city. The first project that I'd like to discuss would be the 30th Street West project, or the interim bypass from exits 59 north. That project is kind of going into winter suspension right now. I just spoke with the DOT today. Traffic is on the concrete. If you haven't been out to the west end of town lately, but they do have traffic on the concrete. It's not completely finished, but it'll be open to concrete. They're removing all the construction signs today, should be open for free-flowing traffic, at least for the first mile up to 21st Street after today. So, that project is, we'll have some carryover work to get done next spring, but the roadway essentially is open, and there's a little bit of work to do at the 21st Street intersection. Other than that, our five-lane concrete section is completed. I've been in discussion with the DOT and HDR in designing the railroad grade separation at State Avenue. We've had some discussions on the pedestrian access from the folks that will be on Broadway and how they'll get south. I think our big pedestrian generator out there, we probably have two, the main one being the Gress Ball Diamond Complex south of the river, and then Turtle Park and the Dickinson Dyke out east. To get east isn't a problem because the Broadway will still be open. You'll be able to go that way underneath the new bridge. To get south will be a little more indirect, because you'll have to get up and onto the bridge to stay on the sidewalk. And so, we're working through some of those design details. But that project is on track right now for an April letting through the DOT. And hopefully, that project, I don't believe will get completed in '14, but they'll get a good start on it in '14. The couple of asbills that we've walked through right now, the Sanford Clinic, our staff has walked through to review the site. The building isn't quite complete yet. The site looked very good. The concrete was in really excellent shape. They'd done a great job landscaping the property. And so, I think from the civil end, the only thing they have left to complete is the lighting, which they haven't got the light poles yet for the Sanford Clinic. And then, we did a walkthrough of the frontage road on the I-94 West Business Loop as well. That project needed some cleanup work, but the concrete, again, looked pretty good on that project as well. One thing to mention, it's been on our website for quite a while, but the city has enacted a winter suspension for work in our right-of-way. Mainly what we're focusing on is cutting into our streets right now and not being able to patch them in adequately with the frost going into the ground. That went into effect on the 27th, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I think probably just in time with our cold snap coming up here. So, that concludes my project update. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. We'll move to Public Works. Mr. Zaroff, do you have item A there? Are you introducing that, or is Mr. Cole?
I believe I am. President Johnson, Commission, for your consideration, we have a memorandum of understanding with Stark County. Stark County has planned to mill and overlay Lehigh Road, I believe I'm saying it right, from West Vallard to the landfill. After that was discovered, we also had on our list as one of our priorities to do energy drive from the East Business Loop down to the intersection of Vallard. So, in discussion with the county and Mr. Heiser, it was decided that we make one project out of this, combine the project. It will be done through the county. We're basically jumping on their project, and I think will benefit the city and the county. And so, that road will be mailed, overlaid all the way from the East Business Loop all the way to the landfill. So, this is just a MOU for that project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zaroff. If you've heard his introduction, are there any comments or questions before we ask for a motion regarding approval of the memorandum of understanding?
I have one. I think this makes a lot of sense to do it. I assume the cost would be coming from whatever we had budgeted for Mill and Overlay.
Right. This will come out of our Mill and Overlay budget. And like you said, it was one of the streets we were looking at, so, yep.
Other comments? Would there be a motion regarding the approval of the memorandum?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
President Johnson, Commission, I don't have any formal updates on projects. I guess I'm open for any questions. Mr. Kubis and then Loretta, we're looking at combining that map that I showed last time on the project map to include the development projects. So, I think once that's combined, we'll have that up at least maybe monthly. And then, if there's any questions, concerns, or updates, we can maybe do the projects that way. So, that's the plan. But if you have any questions on current projects, there's nothing. Everything's going fairly smooth. So, if you don't have any questions, I'll.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to item A then, the Community Development. Mr. Kurtan.
Mr. President, Commissioners, we have a final plat for the Benland subdivision that's generally located south of Eighth Street Southeast and east of 10th Avenue Southwest in the ETZ. The plat will consist of one lot. It's a one-lot subdivision in order for them to build a residence on it. Private access will be, through a private access easement, will provide access to that lot. Plan and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Are there any comments or questions? This is a resolution? Will it be resolution number 54?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Mr. President, move to approve resolution number 54-2013.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Oldman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Last item I have, Mr. President, is the building report, building permit report for reference only. If you have specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Are there any questions in general for Mr. Kurtan? Okay. Are there any reports or issues by commissioners? Are there any issues by city administrators?
I have one more thing. You all received an invitation earlier today to tour the West River Community Center. I've heard from a sufficient number of you to know that this is something that you're interested in. So, the plan is to conduct the tour prior to the commission meeting on the 16th at 3:00. Please arrive shortly before that. No idea what the weather's going to be like, and a portion of this tour will be outdoors, so please come appropriately attired. We'll conduct the tour then at 3:00. It'll last about an hour, and then we'll come back and have the meeting at 4:30.
Mr. Kessel, you know, I raised privately an issue with you regarding the construction debris around the Braxton apartment development. There's quite a bit of debris on the site, south of the site and east of the site. As a city, do we have, can we, is there, how do we enforce cleanup, I guess? Do we have enforcement?
We do. I did talk to our building official about that. We do have ordinances that do require them to retain their materials on-site, and he was going to address that issue specifically. I did not follow up before our commission meeting, so I can't tell you where that is, but, and maybe Mr. Cole can speak directly about the ordinance, but I know that we can address construction materials staying on-site.
Yeah. And, you know, I raised the issue before, because I was hoping they would clean it up prior to any significant snowfall, and that doesn't appear to be the case. But, I mean, that, it's kind of an eyesore over there. I mean, not the construction project, it's a nice-looking project, but I think they could have done a much better job of policing their site. And I hope we formally communicate that to them. Are there any public issues? If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the commission, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. If there's no public issues, the chair would entertain the motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries.